That's a good way to get an eighty-five inch TV.
Nah, we've had that one for, this one was, is one of those, the three D ones when they first came out, so it was about an eight-year-old TV and.
We are going live.
Yeah, so it's better just to go ahead and just change the, um, the backlight bulb and buy a whole new one.
Okay, we're live.
All right, uh, I call this meeting to order at seven oh four PM. Uh, can we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Paul Tim Harvey.
Present.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Here.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Krupa.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we have everyone here and moving on now to the pledge of allegiance. Um, Councilwoman Emily Hill, do you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Of course. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands.
All right, do we have any public comments for tonight?
We do not.
Okay, moving on to public hearing, we have a, open a public hearing, uh, conduct a public hearing on ordinance rezoning forty-three point nine-two acres more or less. Out of the James Manor survey number forty, abstract five forty-six and being located in the nine nine hundred block of Hill Lane Manor, Texas from Segal Family SF one to light industrial IN one. Uh, Scott.
Uh, evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so this property is located at the, the end of Hill Lane for the city's part, so the Hill Lane keeps going down to Main or Downs, but that's in Austin ZTJ, so this is on the border of our city limits. Um, and the property, it, it's forty-three acres, but, um, there is some floodplain on it, so really I think only it's twenty-eight developable acres. Um, and they are looking to do light industrial for, um, they're proposing a cold storage distribution center on that as well as, um, uh, in the future, sort of a flex office industrial space. Um, and the, the planning commission, you know, when you get to the action, and the planning commission has recommended approval for this one.
All right, uh, any questions from council?
Has anyone else said anything about, um, them, I guess, changing their zoning over there with some of the other areas that are developing?
No, there were no comments from any of the notified adjacent property owners. And Uvi, I'm not sure if the, if anyone or if the representatives are here.
They signed up to speak, but I don't see anyone.
And that wouldn't be the only light industrial over there.
Um, it would be for what's in the city and so, um, uh, from what I've heard, uh, different developers wanting to do some in the neighborhood of like nine hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet of light industrial where Main or Downs is, and then you may have seen the signs on like Palmer for their light industrial in between two, two ninety and one thirty, so that's all Austin, um, and not under our purview or regulations, but that whole area intersection is sort of industrial space.
Sorry to interrupt, Scott. Um, Darren is on, he's available for any questions.
Okay, so, I'm looking here, the things that are highlighted and any idea out of the ones highlighted, wha- what is the, maybe currently right now, the areas of interest out of those?
Uh, it would just, for the, under the definitions that you're looking at of the allowable uses, it would just be, um, the light industrial. So like the definition of light industrial includes distribution, warehousing distribution.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what's highlighted, so you got, uh, adult-oriented businesses, art studio, gallery, automobile bear, automobile repairs, breweries and, and so forth, so, I mean, that's, that's, that's a, that's a large differentiation of opportunities.
Yeah, what's that, that one is what concerns me, that adult, how's it worded? I'm sorry.
Uh, another permit, a specific use permit, so.
Yeah, what, if, um, if there's a use, there has to be a zoning that allows it. And so that's the district we allowed it in, but only with a special permit so that it would need to come back to council and, and, you know, a decision would need to be them made by council at that time.
And that's what that, uh, C slash S means, special permit?
Yes, yeah, in Austin, what they do is put a conditional overlay and prohibit certain uses within districts. But we don't really, that's not how we, we do the zoning here, we, we go with special permits for uses that, uh, might not be in the, oh, how do I want to say this, uses that might be questionable from council.
That's a good way to put it.
Okay. Any additional questions from, from council? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing, or do, uh, have comments from anybody that signed up to, to want to speak on this? All right, there being none, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I have my.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna ask if Darren have anything he want to share, did he want to wait until later?
I know, I was just here to answer any questions that, uh, not come about for, for the development. And, uh, if there are any, I, I would be here to, uh, represent the developer. Other than that, I have, have no comments on, on the zoning case.
All right, uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, make a motion that we close the public hearing for the ordinance rezoning for three point nine-two acres more or less of the James Manor survey number four zero, abstract five four six and locate, being located in the nine hundred, nine thousand nine hundred block of Hill Lane Manor, Texas. From single family one to light industrial one.
Uh, it's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
A second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, all following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by myself or a fellow council member, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, it is consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the city council minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty-one, city council regular meeting in city council workshop. In consideration, discussion, and possible action on the acceptance of the April twenty twenty-one departmental reports. Uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor. I'd like to, uh, I have a question for both the city manager, the Lydia and, uh, Mike Tully on the report dealing with the clogged sewage and drainage systems as well as the freshwater piping system cracks and leaks.
Understood, so can you mind doing a, uh, for a point order, mind doing a motion, uh, to approve, uh, with questions? And then if we get a second, then we can open it up for, for questions.
Yes, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that for the, that we approve the consent agenda with questions.
Uh, it's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, questions, go ahead, Jean.
Okay, um, this has to deal with, um, inspection of piping both the freshwater system and the sewage system. This comes from me having a problem with my sewage system and having a, a specific tool used to find out where the cracks were in my sewage system and found out they were on my side of the my side at the property as well as city side. My question is, does the public works have a tool that would do that, such as a camera that has a three sixty-degree rotating head? And it has at least one hundred to three hundred feet of cabling to go through the piping? Because I read a lot of the reports of the leaks and clogs and everything else, and I think this would be a good tool to, to have public works be more effective in dealing with situations.
Uh, no, we don't have no instruments like that to do what you're asking. Uh, basically, you know, we wouldn't be able to do the customer side anyway. We could do our side, but generally, when we have a problem, we go ahead and dig it up and do the repairs at, at that point where the cleanout is.
Okay, um, the reason I'm asking is because the unit that I saw, it would be effective, the, the cost is maybe prohibitive because it's twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. And to do both the freshwater and the drainage system would have to have two units. This takes, it has a monitor with it, a three sixty-degree camera, a hundred to three hundred foot of cable, a hundred twenty volt system, it has a locator system on it, and it actually has boot Bluetooth that can actually go to other devices, and the locator is good for the breaks, the clogs. I'm just asking because of my personal situation, and it seemed to be an effective way for the company that did my job to find the problems and have it done within two days. And they had specific areas they dug up, they didn't have to dig up a lot of area to do this. That's why I'm bringing up this, uh, question.
So, Councilmember Krupa, what, what we can do is, is look, nothing's budgeted for the equipment, we don't have it right now. Uh, that doesn't mean we can't look into it and, and come back to council with cost estimates. Um, it might be a little tight out of this budget, but something we can plan for next year's budget.
Tom, that, that'd be great, just, I'm trying to look at, after the people that are working there and also making it more efficient and effective in them doing their job, and if it can't be done this year, but we can look at it for next year, I'll be happy with that.
Okay, we will look into it.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions, uh, on this agenda item? Uh, just have two, one, Debbie, did you want to speak on a leadership manner graduation?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I think it was a really great day. Uh, the class really enjoyed themselves, they did a great job on their class project. We did finish today, we did our state capital tour. So, class number one is, is done and, uh, looking forward to moving on to, um, class number two. But again, thank you, everybody, for attending the graduation, they really appreciated it, and so did I.
I appreciate you, uh, putting it on and, uh, the City Hall team, uh, definitely being supportive of, of this initial launch and looking forward to, uh, what this group ends up, uh, getting involved with. And now that we have a lot of different committees, uh, uh, that individuals can work in, uh, so looking forward to it.
Yes, sir, and they were discussing that at lunch today, what committees they could get involved with.
Okay, good stuff, good stuff. Um, I see on here Dairy Queen, it says con- contractor and development in building process. Do we have a potential timeline, knowing that it's a guestimate?
The, are you asking like the completion for the Dairy Queen?
Yeah, when, when will we be able to go and go get ice cream and, and shakes and stuff?
But they're highly motivated, uh, they, they should be going vertical here really soon, they had, um, a slight delay because the the water wastewater lines that feed the property weren't accepted by the city, because a separate developer is doing that as part of a larger Main or Commons development, like more that's over there, um. And so the, the fire service, that's necessary for vertical construction wasn't in place, so they kind of got delayed, but that's taken care of or about to be taken care of, so they should be resuming and moving quickly after that.
Got it, I appreciate it. Uh, Tracy, did you want to go over the evaluation appraisal, uh, uh, process that we're, we're, we're revamping?
Absolutely, so I presented the assessment that we all discussed and the evi- uh, evaluation and appraisal process. I've also attached the rating system, which we all agree is, uh, one of the best ones we've seen. Um, moving forward, we will be meeting again separately or together, um, and go over just how we want to present it, like what kind of evaluation we're gonna go over. Um, economic vitality, maybe adaptive city government, just different pertinent areas that you guys want to hit.
I appreciate it, and, and team, um, definitely take a look, we're looking for your feedback on this one. Uh, a, a lot of it, just talking with Tom and Tracy and so forth, is, um, how do we, uh, include things like the, the annual state of the city address would, would highlight the priorities and the focus, uh, for the city for the year? In a way to be able to utilize that as the, uh, the, the, the things we're evaluating, the city manager and the engagement of the, the directors, uh, towards those accomplishments, towards those goals. So you'll see in there, uh, on the calendar for the first physical, first physical year, it's, it's basically closing out uh, the previous year's evaluation process, and then kind of going into November, December. Uh, us as a team coming up with, with the priorities for that ensuing year would be write the state of the city address, that then gets tailored into the evaluation process that year for the city manager. And then it helps mitigate, uh, competing, uh, priorities that in each one of us may end up having, or future council members may have, because now it gives something tangible to the city manager and the department heads to be able to see the focuses for this year, or these two, or these three things. Uh, i- i- in, uh, they're not kind of getting pulled into different directions. And then kind of doing a mid-year reassessment, realignment, we saw that this year. There were certain things that we wanted to do economic-wise at the beginning of the year, but then we had the workshop and we found out there were some things we just wouldn't be able to do, so we had to readjust on the overall goal for the year. So that's why we have this in the third, uh, third physical quarter to, to do that reassessment and realignment. Uh, and then fourth quarter, one of the big changes here is the city managers' self-assessments and, and departmental assessments will be, would be, uh, revamped or retweaked to adjust to uh, our assessment now for more of a strategic aspect of, of accomplishing goals that are stated out at the beginning of the year. Uh, that should flesh, uh, should be flesh and fluid. And then, uh, basically now, we would do the evaluation like before. But, but all of us would sit down with the city manager and go over the evaluation process. Uh, it was key to be able to say each council member that, uh, that may have a above center mass or below whatever regarding the city manager, uh, for that year needs to be able to look into that individual's eyes and state why, uh, they came to that particular, uh, uh, decision, right? As a, as a team, um, so look at that, and then as Tracy also said, we, we wanted to flesh out a little bit more detail of what the different blocks mean, a zero, one, two, three, four, five, and six. So, th- there's, um, a very key understanding, especially when it comes to uh, uh, salary increases, benefits, and so forth. We, we're, we're all evaluating on the same standard, uh, and, and we wanted to make sure that it's not just easy to have a one through five and it's, and it's have a three, right? It's either you, you're below or you're above, we gotta pick one, we have to force ourselves to pick one. Um, so if you look at that, please give your feedback, Tracy, uh, if you can send them out, kind of uh, what the, what the revision of some of the questions look like, that are a lot more specific on, on, uh, actionable outcomes from a strategic level, uh, so they can also kind of give some feedback on, uh, areas that may be missing or retweaking of some of those questions.
Absolutely, and so we want to, um, hit more pertinent, that council has been requesting regarding, you know, economic vitality, environmental stewardship, you know? And so we're gonna revamp the whole form itself. Together.
Uh, any, any questions from the team? Last questions, uh, regarding this on the team? All right, there being none, uh, no question, uh, since there are no additional questions, uh, roll call, please, or vote, please.
Sorry, Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yeah.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the regular agenda, uh, item number four, first reading. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning forty-three point nine-two acres more or less out of the James Manor survey number forty, abstract, abstract five forty-six and being located in the nine-nine hundred block of Hill Lane Manor, Texas, from single family SF one to light industrial, uh, IN, IN one, uh, Scott.
Yes, this is that property, that forty, forty-three, forty-four acres on Hill Lane, um, is across from where there's some multifamily zoning and the new, um, St. Joseph Catholic Church was proposed. But yeah, the, the planning commission has recommended approval for this one.
All right, uh, do I have any, any questions, remarks from, uh, council?
The right, right, that's the right, uh, when a church, for a church to be there, that's the right zoning for a church, is my question.
The church is across the street, so, uh, but also technically, yeah, churches, religious assembly is allowed in any zoning district, so that is actually one of the permitted uses in light industrial, but, um, the St. Joseph Church is on a twenty-five acres across the street from this.
Got it, understood, thank you so much.
Any additional questions?
So, there's gonna, there's the apartments, then the church, and then on the other side of that, is that the floodplain where they're not intending to build anything?
Um, so yeah, across Hill Lane from where there's proposed apartments and the church would be this distribution facility, and then the floodplains behind that, so in between two ninety and this property would be the floodplain area, um, I think if Uvi skips a slide or two, it'll show it, but.
Oh, uh, what you call it, um, Scott, um, is gonna be between, uh, this, uh, this what is that, trapezoid, between the trapezoid yellow shape and, uh, those apartments that are going on right now, and that's gonna be in Trattus Land.
Yes, so that's, you know, that's the Entrotagland pit, um, and it's sound like commercial right now, so, um, which is fine to, you know, commercial buffering to that apartments that are down the road.
Well, no, I was just saying, because I, I think there was gonna be, you know, uh, like retail or industrial, whatever is gonna be on that border of then Trattagland anyway.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so yeah, right now it sounds like commercial, so that would be retail and, um, you know, those types of services.
Yeah, so that's, uh, that's all, I just wanted to share that with council, um, I think that part, stuff is already gonna be on, on that border. Uh, anyway, is, you, we can't see it right now, but it's, it's already zoned for that. And there's already a plan for those, for that, that's that, stuff we were talking about a while.
Is that more, um, pictured on the item four slide, where you can see the different?
Yeah, if it goes back, back one more slide, um, it, it has the zoning categories.
Yeah.
All that, all that white space on the left, that's, that's Austin, Austin's jurisdiction, so that's why there's no zoning there. It's not our land to regulate, um, but the pink is like commercial. And then that brown, the brown colors, those are the multifamilies. And then the, the blue, the dark one, the light blue, those are institutional, so, um, the school campus and the St. Joseph Church.
Thank you, you know, I, I was so confused on those, on the blues. But I was like, okay, I think I know the pink, okay, and so I guess, um, I'm not sure if this is in our jurisdiction at all. But for the, just the traffic flow for that, because even just that part of Hill Lane is kind of narrow. Is that gonna be increased, and will that be just a part of, I guess, the ones who are building down there? Is it gonna be their responsibility, or?
So, multiple people, um, so the development on this property, you know, it may trigger if it's over the two thousand trips per day, uh, traffic impact analysis, which, um, generally looks at intersections. So they would be looking at the intersection of Hill Lane and Greg Manor and Greg Manor and two ninety, and, you know, if turn lanes and all that are needed. Um, there is a road sizing component of that, but most of the time it's intersection improvements. But the Entrotagland pit, so all that pink area that's just next to it. Part of their proposed pit-funded or pit-eligible improvements is, um, rebuilding Hill Lane and probably widening it, they have a couple million dollars in there to enhance Hill Lane. Um, so on our thoroughfare plan, it's shown as a primary collector, which is sixty-four feet right away, but it's still only two lanes, so you end up with, it's forty-two feet of pavement, so you have twenty-foot wide lanes. And then, so that's, that's, you know, sufficient capacity to handle all that's proposed on that road.
There you go, okay, that's what I was wondering, and I guess my last question is just about the idea of, I'm not sure how all distribution centers are, but with that and some of the other, the what's already going up in there, that's gonna be light industrial, just kind of the, the pollution factor in that area. Are we kind of getting into a high pollutant area?
Uh, I mean, the I can't speak definitively, but the use itself shouldn't emit anything as a distribution center, it's just a big warehouse, but yes, the there will be, you know, semis that are, you know, larger trucks that frequent there, that aren't frequenting in there now, so.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking, actually, I was thinking about the number of eighteen-wheeler traffic that will be going that way, and then if it was gonna be emitting any smoke or anything like that into the air in that area or something like that, or just kind of a runoff of liquids, just to.
Should have, if they do, they're gonna have some issues with us and, uh, TCEQ.
Okay.
In, in the zoning ordinance, there, there are some tight regulations on, uh, development in industrial uh, zone properties to address just the things you're talking about. Um, we don't have a lot of them, so we haven't had to do much of that, but as we move forward, we're, we're gonna be looking at, at categories similar to this, that we're gonna need to be, uh, paying attention to those sections of the ordinance.
Okay, all right, I just, at least it's something, since it'll be within our city limits, it'll be more something that we can have more control of over some of the other things that are, because around our area, but we don't have control over it, do those things. Okay.
Austin, and, you know, I'm not sure whether this is Austin city limits or two mile E T J or five mile, but they're they're generally very interested in the environmental aspects of what they're doing, and so I'm less concerned about what happens on the Austin side of the boundaries.
I agree, all right, thank you.
Hey, Darren, could you, uh, um, maybe talk about, I guess, the, um, Um, maybe talk about, I guess, the, um, any of the, I guess, the, the questions of a certain. Uh, um, climate, I know we also at the city just recently, um, took some projections and. Um, to move forward towards, you know, clean air and those kinda things, and, um, forgive me, mayor, the name doesn't come to my head.
The climate mayor is in the C forty and the Paris Agreement, yeah.
Yeah, so we just went into those things, and so those are some of the things that important was that what, as we grow. And, um, and we do want, you know, commercial entry and those kinda things, so. I don't know if you can speak to that or not, but if you could, we'd love to hear.
Was this directed to me, Darren Huckert with the, the, development?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't catch the first of it, um, well, the, the building is a distribution facility, so there, there's not a manufacturing or. Um, anything like that, so it'll, it's strictly a kind of a warehouse distribution facility, and that's all I know about it at this moment in time. And so you'll have your, your regular workers that drive there and then the, the trucks that deliver that Scott has already, uh, alluded to. Um, so your, your traffic's not gonna be, you know, much different than, than what's just down on two ninety that's going through your city. Uh, you know, it'll, it'll be similar to that, um, you know, during construction, we'll definitely have all the parameters that. Uh, follow up with T T Q codes and, and, uh, uh, the erosion control measures and stuff whenever the, the ground is under construction. Uh, to contain all that and keep it within the site, uh, just like any of the other construction projects you have going on, um, currently. I don't think that this is gonna truly trigger any, um, high-impact, uh, you know, um. Air, air pollution or anything, it's, it's, uh, the trucks are, um, all licensed by the state, have, have their DOT permits. And that type of stuff that, or else they couldn't be on the highway.
Okay, I just, I, I thought, I, I think that insight, you know, was, um, not important to know. And.
Okay.
So, thanks for sharing.
You're welcome. Mayor Potem, at the planning commission, they also spoke, they're not planning to modify or do anything within the floodplain area, and so. All those trees and everything that are in that floodplain would remain, you know, cause they're not, not planning to do any. Fill or modifications to that, so those types of, you know, vegetative buffers to the creek and everything would remain.
Thanks, I know, I see, miss, uh, Councilwoman Hill, if Deja smiling on that one.
Alright, any additional questions?
Make it noticeable, thank you.
Any additional questions? If there are none, do I have a motion to close the, uh, the, the first reading?
To approve the first reading.
Oh, my son, that, that's what I meant, to approve the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, uh, City Council approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning forty-three point nine two acres or more or less. Out of James Manor survey number forty, abstract five four six. And being located in the ninety-nine hundred block of Hill Lane, Mayor Texas from single family SF dash one to light industrial. I N dash one.
It's been so motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion, questions to the motion, uh, roll call please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember where?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppen? Jean, you're me.
I think, yeah, I think you're on me, Jean.
Sorry about that, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to agenda item number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action. On a resolution of the city of Manor, Texas approving and authorizing the First Amendment. To the Manor Heights Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement, major improvement area, Tom?
Uh, actually Veronica is probably gonna pick up this one here.
Okay.
Sir Mayor and co- councilmembers, Veronica Ribera, Assistant City Attorney. Um, if you recall, at the last city council meeting, um, there were quite a few items on Manor Heights. Including, uh, Manor Heights Pid, including a reimbursement agreement covering major improvement area. And, um, at that meeting, we mentioned to y'all that we were, we would be coming back to you with this First Amendment. Um, due to the interest rates being, um, so low and, and we, and we did, the city did so well. In terms of, um, pricing, so, um, there is additional monies that, um. The developer would, uh, would like to be able to, um, to receive. And so, um, the, this First Amendment again is being brought to you, covering the major improvement area. Uh, where again, the only thing that, um, that has changed is the amount, um. From seven million to eight million, and, uh, that was again, city council approved this last, uh, at the last city council meeting. I'm here to answer any additional questions, and we also have, uh, the developer's attorney here to answer questions and bond counsel as well.
Alright, uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution. Of the city of Manor, Texas approving and authorizing the First Amendment to the Manor Heights Public Improvement District. Reimbursement Agreement, the major improvement area.
Alright, it's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
Seconding.
And who's that? Oh, yeah, those, and, and seconded, uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember where?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppen?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number six, consideration, discussion. And possible action on a resolution expressing intent to finance expenditures to be incurred by the city of Manor, Texas, Tom?
And Mayor, I thought Frank was gonna be handling this one, or, or, or.
No, the Veronica.
Veronica, okay.
Yes.
I, I know Frank and I talked earlier today about something very similar, and.
Okay.
Sure, so again, uh, Mayor, councilmembers, Veronica Ribera, Assistant City Attorney. Um, this is a reimbursement resolution similar to one that you had previously approved for some, uh. Design and surveying costs related to the wastewater treatment plant. Again, this is one of the major improvements for the Manor Heights Pid. And reimbursement resolutions are common when it comes to kids of this nature, uh, that we have some significant. Um, improvements, in this case, a wastewater treatment plant. And, um, right, what we are asking is approval of this resolution so that. Um, Pid proceeds can go back to the city for, um, costs that, uh, were incurred. Regarding design and construction of, um, related to the wastewater treatment plant, and that is provided in the resolution. Uh, again, same thing, if you have any quest, any additional questions, I'm here to answer along with, uh, bond counsel.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
Very, I motion that, uh, City Council approve resolution number two zero two one dash one four. Approving and authorizing resolution expressing intent to finance expenditures to be incurred by the city of Manor, Texas.
It has been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember where?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda item passes, City Council will now convene into executive session. Pursuing to the provisions of chapter five five one, section five five one point zero four Personnel Matters. Texas Government Code to deliberate the employment of the city manager.
Uh, Mayor and councilmembers, you should be getting an email shortly, look for that, uh, it's what we're gonna discuss. And.
Alright. I don't think I got a room invite.
I'm still in here. Um, oh, Dr. Harvey, give me a sec, Mayor Protim, hold on.
Uh, Emily too.
Emily too.
There we go.
We're having technical shoot, technical issues on our end. Emily, are you there? You have to join.